Stay connected. Make sure you hit the subscribe button.
For his old business? The 220, 226 Port Watson Street, the area variance that we heard last meeting in December, that's being brought back for re-hearing. We, as a board, need to make a motion. And our corporate counsel is here, so if we have any questions, maybe we can let him talk first?
Make the motion.
Sure. Oh, make the motion first to re-hear?
I'll make the motion.
Okay. We need to have a motion to re-hear.
I'll second that.
This needs to be a unanimous yes. All in favor? I see all hands. Any no's? Okay, so unanimous decision to re-hear. Now we can have discussion with corporate counsel, maybe he can...
I think that, I mean, this is with respect to the Burnberry area variances. I know that you guys did hear this. I'm AJ Milder, by the way, listening to everyone. And we do have some representation from Burnberry here today. I suspect all of you are familiar with what they're seeking. And ultimately, this is just an opportunity to revisit those things or re-hear those things as you guys just voted, because I think that there were some deficiencies in my own opinion, based on the decision and the record that I read last time. A couple other technicality issues that we're working on cleaning up. And maybe, Tom, this is, I don't know if you want to speak to this a little bit. Long story short, because I'm sure you're all aware, there's a five-factor test in the charter that every area variance has to go through that review process, right? And I think it's important and incumbent on this board to have thoughtful discussion, deliberation as to why yes, if you're going to vote yes, or why no, right? Because the record, I think that, I'm sure you guys are all aware, I'm obviously newer to this particular issue than you guys are, but the county planning agency made a recommendation of yes based on some contingencies that Burnberry is satisfied. County Planning Board recommended a denial, and I think that's, I won't assume anything, but probably part of the basis as to why this board found a way it did. Because I'm having a hard time finding those justifications anyway. So I think that this discussion is just for that. Let's talk about this. The factors through that five-person test, or that five-factor test, I think that we also probably needed...
Well, the county planning commission voted yes.
Right.
So we need...
Commission versus board.
Right. The commission to have, to vote against the commission, we have to have five members vote yes to override a recommendation of the county planning board. So who, did the board vote?
I don't, I think that...
I think the board voted yes. Everyone, every agency voted to pass this. Okay, so...
In order to override that, I think you guys need to have...
In order to, yes. Yeah. So a concurring vote of five members of the board is necessary to override a recommendation by the Portland County Planning Board. And that was not even brought up in the last meeting.
Right.
And that should definitely, if we're going to vote no, or we need to say the reasons, also it needs to be five, not...
Or yes, I mean, why?
Right, right. I'm just saying, if it's to override their decision, it needs to be five of us. And right, and rehearing this, we don't have to come to the same decision we did last time. It can, we can reverse modify or annul our original decision based on a unanimous vote of all members present. So if we're going to change it, we need to have a unanimous decision by re-hearing.
I think you need a super majority.
You need to...
Concentrated hearing, the board may reverse, modify, or annul its original order, decision, or determination upon a unanimous vote of all members present.
To re-hear.
Is it turning?
Yes.
But don't override it, it's a super majority.
Okay.
And we finally have a full board. I think there were two debates. Either way, it's going to be a little more helpful. So I think that, and I don't want to speak for Burnberry's representatives, but ultimately, they apply to these variants. There's a technicality in the way the common council went about rezoning a particular parcel that has gone back before the common council to fix that discrepancy. Ultimately, there needs to be a local law to repeal the original local law that resulted in the TV1 determination filed with the state to make it a general business district two. So the common council already approved that, but it will still have to go through a public hearing, local law of the state, to reflect those changes.
All right, dude, this is the back square area that we were talking about.
Yes.
I'll be, I'm going to give the presentation.
Right, and whatever, whatever you guys want.
Do we start the listing of the actual, the rules that we were voting on? Because in all reality, we were just voting on replacement of the building. That was, that was it.
Right, setbacks.
We had setbacks, all we had was setbacks is what we were voting on.
Right, that's almost right.
There wasn't anything about traffic patterns and all that stuff was already done in the studies, so...
So we can... Yeah, right, agent, correct. I remember the process.
Because, again, we're trying to make sure that all the stuff is in place. If common council still has to vote, how are we able to hear this?
Ultimately, you can, you can re-hear any decision that the board makes.
But are we going to be finding ourselves in the same position if common council still has to...
Well, I don't think that, I don't think that, they're just voting on that little square parcel.
Yeah, they're just rezoning that little parcel, that's right.
You guys can still contemplate the setbacks. That's my... Yes, to your question, that still needs to be cleaned up, that rezoning of that. The common council, there's a couple more steps that we have to comply with.
So AJ, if I'm correct, we are voting on three variances on the 300-33.
There's actually five variances.
And then there's two in the 103. So we are, have front yard setback, front yard setback, rear yard setback, and building placement total of five. Oh, thank you.
Right, that's what you wanted, Brett?
That's what I'm looking at.
This is the one I gave us that is clear because it's going to have the maximum.
So that's what I've got elected on.
That's all we're deciding on.
That's all we're deciding on. Yeah, that's it.
And the, right, that's for...
I think there may have been some confusion last time as to what we were...
I think they're right, yeah.
What was in our purview.
Yeah, because this is all that we can really vote on, is what we have here.
And these five requests, right? So do we need to open it up for the... Do you have any other questions for AJ?
I do have additional questions on this. So there are like, so there are five variances being applied to, and all area variances. And I'm happy to, and obviously, this is a decision that the board needs to contemplate. I'm just here to render a place if you have any questions. But I think it's important to, whatever determination is made by each individual board member, that those five factors are truly elaborated and discussed.
Do you have a copy of those five factors?
Yep, they're actually, I think there is.
AJ, one second. Do you have any precedence on other buildings in the city with these allowed numbers that you know of? In that particular, not, no, just like, have we, in the city, allowed setbacks and stuff like this, or even close to this in the past? Have we looked into that?
I'm told yes, but there, like, there's a lot of things that aren't electronically cataloged.
Right.
And I've been trying to...
Because you look at some of the places that we've got in town, and this is, to be honest, a lot more difficult. We don't know.
Those are, those are accurate estimates, though. And in fact, and the ones I was really looking for to help, thank you guys.
So you answered my question.
CFCU, that CFCU building and Walgreens Rite Aid building. Those are obviously substantial structures with a substantial setback.
Which are relatively...
Right. In the same neighborhood.
And then hold them. Then probably even further even more straight.
Are we going to have discussion?
Yeah.
I think we have to open...
We have to, yes. We have to open the public...
Public hearing.
Is there a motion to open the...
I'm voting.
All in favor? Any no's?
Does anyone need a site plan? I have full-size, not everything, you know? Think that everyone can see there right now?
Yeah.
Everyone else situated? All set?
Yep.
Okay. Well, good evening. My name is Christian Brownall, Senior Executive Vice President of Burnberry/Sunburn Sales. Sunburn Sales is actually the applicant, it's the retail division of Burnberry, just to clarify that. In front of you guys tonight, as is mentioned by Corporation Counsel for some of the area variances, five in total, for a new Burnberry at the corner of Port Watson and River Street. You can see it right here. It's currently the CNY rentals with a car wash. And AJ did a quick timeline earlier, I wanted to give you guys a little more in-depth timeline of where we stand with this, for approvals and whatnot. Portland County Planning Board did recommend denial against the Portland County professional planning staff. I addressed all the planning staff's issues. They were given, the planning staff was satisfactory, they recommended approval, okay, for site plan, zone change, and the five area variances, okay? Also, as mentioned, AJ mentioned, the common council did approve the zone change. The zone change, one of the questions by one of the coordinators earlier, was this square right here? So there is three parcels here, three separate tax parcels, okay? It's actually easier to see, I'm going to flip it over on a zoning map for you guys to see. I blew it up to make it easier, okay? Again, this has gone through several meetings, the common council. You'll see the parcel here, you see this little yellow here, R2? That's the parcel that was rezoned by the common council, okay? It was rezoned from an R2 to a GB2. You can see the whole entire area is GB2, except for this little landlock piece here, okay? That landlock piece is the same ownership as here, the Law family. So that is currently a GB2, but just to let you know, that's the piece. And on the site plan, what that affects is basically the dumpster enclosure back here, this little corner, you see that little jut out? That's what's been changed, okay? Site's approximately 1.1 acres. So the planning commission, okay, so the zone change was done, then we moved on to the planning commission, went to several meetings. The planning, the city planning commission voted approval, five to zero, for this site plan right here with the modifications. So that was the final site plan approval they granted. The planning commission also recommended approval to this board, this EBA board, for all five area variances. They thought they, they were fine. So what I'm going to do now is I'm going to jump into just, there's some members here that aren't familiar with the plan, so I'm just going to go over a quick site plan, really kind of high level, just to let you guys know, so when I'm talking about these area variances, you understand a little better, okay? It's a 4,232 square foot store here with a green roof, you'll see that there. You have fuel pumps, that's the fuel canopy, the white thing out front here. It's got four pumps, eight fueling positions, okay? Again, there's four fuel pumps right here, and that's between the building and Port Watson. Two curb cuts, one on Port Watson here, one on River Street here. Currently, approximately four curb cuts right now on Port Watson, and it's just kind of a free fall here on River Street, okay? 22% green space on this plan right here compared to what's there now is probably close to about less than 5%. It's all on purpose. 25 parking spaces, you can see where they're situated inside the building and in front of the building along here. Two pedestrian accesses, which the planning commission really wanted us to focus on, just in case the neighbors want to walk. One of the accesses over here is the sidewalk here. We got, actually, I moved it per the planning commission. There's a sidewalk over here off of River Street. That puts them right to our porch, okay, so they don't have to walk through the parking lots, okay? And that is the, would be the northeast corner right here. Also, another pedestrian access down here, we want to make sure we have two of them, off of Port Watson Street. You can see the sidewalk coming here, that goes all the way back here and goes onto the front porch. We also, planning commission wanted to make sure, as you saw from the zoning back here is R2, this is all GB2, decided to put a six-foot wooden privacy fence up. I do have pictures, and again, this was already, went through in depth with the planning commission. This would be the fence that we put up, okay, for the neighbors. Okay, you can see it's a nice seater-type custom wooden privacy fence, not board-to-board, but tight. Again, that'll help with lighting, noise, anything like that. So we did propose a fence around the perimeter property here. Also, the lighting, a lighting plan was submitted to the planning commission, foot candles and spill, it's 100% dark sky-friendly compliant lighting, directional downward LED lights, okay? But the planning commission did look at that in depth as well, for lighting. You've got a dumpster enclosure in the back area here, as I mentioned before. But that's kind of the high level, you can see the street trees and whatnot. Again, that's the planning commission after going to several meetings. Underground storage tanks would be right here. That's a little gray area at the end of the fuel canopy. Sign, we won't get into specifics there, but there's a freestanding sign on the corner here. Okay, two building signs here and here. Everyone has probably seen our stores, I'm sure, around with a green roof, that would be kind of the design, what's going to be here is the green roof store that you guys have probably seen, the old, now built a home over there, but that's the type of design here. Okay, so that was a quick overview of the site plan. Any questions? Because I'm going to get into the variances now.
Well, just a correction, just to let you know, your site plan, you clarified, but you have six-inch weather wall. Really fence. Interesting. So just a clarification. And in relationship to what the variances are for, which is building placement...
Yep, I'm going to go, what I'm going to do now, after I got done with that site, that's why I wound up. Okay, so now I'm going to get into the five variances, okay? So your zoning, me and Bob Ray went through the zoning repeatedly and had several questions in regards to your zoning with a corner lot. If you look at your definitions of corner lot, which you guys probably don't, but I do, this is the first advocate in the project, your definition of a corner lot is this, "In all residential districts, corner lot shall have a front yard on each abutting street with a minimum depth equal to the required front yard." This is not residential, so that's not applicable. So me and Bob kept going back and forth and asking, "Where's the front yard?", whatnot. Every municipality seems to be different. Being a corner lot, sometimes there's a front yard or rear yard on two sides, right, which is typical. Sometimes there's two fronts and two rears. Sometimes there's two fronts and two sides, it's all over the place. So if you go to your definition of a street setback, the setback to the street or front lot line. On corner lots, both yards bordering the street shall be considered as street setbacks. Such street setbacks shall be measured from public right away. So therefore, what we determined, okay, from that, to the best of our ability to beg, is we have two fronts here. That's really why you have a couple of variances that are kind of redundant for front yard parking, okay, because you have two front yards. We also determined this one to be a rear, okay? And this one to be a side. How we came up with that, I really don't know, but that's what was determined, and that's what we went with. So we have two fronts, one on Port Watson, one on River, the rear back here and the side over here. And now I'm going to go through the variances, and if I confuse you, just let me know, because sometimes I do confuse myself. The first out of the five area variances in regard is a front yard setback. Again, two front yards, but this front yard specifically, you'll see on your sheet here, is in regards to the Port Watson Street. You'll see we have a measurement on the site plan here of 117 feet. Your zoning, okay, so front yard setback, Port Watson Street's number one. Your zoning says it needs to be minimum 30, maximum 40, so we need to be right up where the canopy is, okay? We're proposing 117, therefore, the relief needed is for 87 feet. So that's one of them, okay? Now, because we have two front yards, we need another front yard setback for the other side of the building, okay? Over here to the east side of the building. So that's the same zoning, section 333-C and D. Again, your minimum is 30, maximum is 40. Our proposed is 72, there's a line over here that says 72. Again, so relief needed there is 32 feet, okay? So there are kind of two front yards, which is kind of weird, you know, guys, so two of them, that's what we have there. Number three will be a rear yard setback. As I said before, we determined the rear yard to be the north property line here. The rear yard in your code has to be 20 feet, okay? I have 10 feet to mechanical pad, that's a mechanical pad right there. It's not the building, but it is attached to the building and a roof, a condenser's underneath it, so the actual building is 17 feet. But to take the measurement to a structure, I went with 10. So relief needed there is 10 feet relief, okay? So that's the third one, third variance. Fourth area variance is parking area location, layout and design, section 384-A1, which requires no parking shall be permitted in the front yard. There we go, we'll get with the two front yards. As you can see, I have parking technically in the front yard in front of the store here, and in this front yard as well, and I have front yard parking here. That's number four. Number five is building placement, as mentioned before, I think we covered that, section 30103-C, one and two. Required frontage width, a minimum of 50% of the building shall be located within the build-to-zone. This kind of goes hand-in-hand with the front yard setback, right? It's kind of, it's kind of weird that you have it there because you cover it with the front yard. Prohibitive design elements between the building and property line, motor vehicle parking, that's, again, I'm already getting a variance for that, so this is kind of redundant, but I want to make sure it isn't technically per your code of variance. And then motor vehicle access, drives, dry lanes, aisles, except those necessary to provide direct access to public street. So that's the five variances that's in front of this board that I'm asking for relief for. That was camped out in the package at Corporation Counsel head. Also, this is just my copy, go through. This was submitted way back in June. Okay, last time, we did not go through this in this detail. I know there was some confusion of how many variances and what variances, but these are the actual variances that are on the application that were... Okay, now we're going to talk about the considerations as Corporation Counsel mentioned. In granting an area variance, the board shall use the following guidelines. I think he handed those out, there's five questions that you have to answer, the board. I'm going to read them verbatim here. The following test will be considered by the zoning board of appeals, determine whether the variance is weighing or granting or denial of the area variances request. Number one question, and I have some bullet points you guys can take notes if you want, whether an undesirable change will be produced in the character of the neighborhood or a detriment to nearby properties will be created by granting area variances. There will be no desirable change or detriment to the neighborhood. The area is completely commercial. As I mentioned before, I wanted to show you guys this map right here. You can see the zoning area, okay? That's a commercial zone area, okay? It's all commercial there. I, we did the records through the abstract, we looked it up. Since 1955, over 65 years, this property has had an intense automobile use at it. For 15 of those years, there was an actual gas station, okay? So there was a gas station at this corner for 15-plus years. It also, again, had a car wash, from my records, for over 45-plus years, and a service station, okay? When it stopped selling gas, it continued to operate a service station, okay? And it has a car wash. And everyone knows in the last four to five years, it has been a CNY rental place for rental equipment, and the car wash still exists there today, although not used and it's currently vacant. Your master plan from the city of Portland states on page 52, it defines this area as highway commercial. This is directly from your master plan. Definition of this is typified by auto-oriented development. Site is in the Port Watson gateway, and again, there's three highway commercial districts that your master plan says, and this is considered the Port Watson gateway, this whole area through here. The plan mentions recent developments such as credit union and Rite Aid are site developments that should be encouraged, and I think AJ had mentioned that before. That's, again, that's right from your master plan. They'd like to see developments like this Rite Aid and the credit union, which I see some things here, I think Bob Ray, your co-enforcement officer, gave you some dimensions. I believe the building setbacks on those properties are 90 feet, okay? So in the corridor, okay, there are already buildings that exceed these setbacks that you have in your zoning. And your master plan says that's the way it should be developed in that corridor. You can see, I took some pictures here, I'm going to hand these out to you guys further here. This is totally different. You'll see basically the first, the first page here, that shows, I know it's tough to see, but this is an aerial taken in 1995 of the site. If you look closely, it's a little fuzzy, but you can see all the cars parked there, right, in front of it? In both front yard areas, there's several cars that are, that were done there in 1995, and today, if you went there, parking is in the front, both fronts, okay? If you go to the second page, this is, as mentioned by the Corporation Counsel, this is Walgreens, which is mentioning your master plan as a good development, okay? You'll see 90-foot front yard, and there's parking, as you can see from the picture, in the front of the Rite Aid. Basically exactly what I'm asking for. You flip the page, there's your credit union, 182 Port Watson. You can see the front yard here is 92 feet, and you can see, again, there is also parking in front of that, front yard parking. The other ones, I just wanted to get a little closer to the site, AJ's diner, 202 Port Watson, there's a 24-foot front yard, but that's actually too close. But then you have, they also have parking for AJ's diner in front of the building, between the building and Port Watson Street. The last picture is Byrnes, which is exactly to the east of the parcel, right here in this corner. That's a service station, which is exactly across from this vacant part, vacant building now, that had a 60-foot front yard setback, and again, you can see the vehicles parked in front. So I've just given you four examples, two of them newer, two of them older, with front yard parking and excessive, or similar, front yard setbacks that I'm asking for, in this board. Everyone knows the site's in disrepair right now. I mean, it's the green spaces, I mentioned before, it's less than 5%. It's bringing no tax base, once over tax dollars, very little to the community. With this project, everyone knows, I mentioned the planning commission, the cost of it, fuel tax, sales tax and all that, it could be a big game for the city. That's the number one question. Number two, real quick, is whether, these ones are much quicker, whether the benefits sought by the applicant can be reached, can be achieved by some method feasible for the applicant to pursue other than area variances. There is no other feasible means to pursue for this use other than the area variances presented to you guys. We looked at this site plan, we changed it, it's more since the original submittal to the planning commission, and this was the final product. You can see the fuel pumps must be in front of the building here, so that the building must be setback and parking in front. That's, you can see the curb cuts here to get in, a vehicle to get in there to maneuver, we've got extra wide lanes here to get in and maneuver to get to the parking spaces. Also, front yard parking, you want parking closer to the streets here. If, I think it was mentioned at the last meeting, actually, in several meetings by the planning commission, they like the design because this is the R2 back here, right, the closest neighbors? If we were to put parking per your code, it would have to be back here. That would be very close to the, you know, the R2 area, the residential homes. By keeping parking up here, the store access is a buffer, got a six-foot fence, but all the parking gets kept towards the roads here, again, away from the residential district. The variances will assure safety, aesthetics, and proper vehicle flow. So you can see, by putting parking back here and not here, I can do additional landscaping, we're cleaning up the whole road, and there's actually pictures in your master plan that show whatnot to do for development, and that is, but, you know, seal asphalt here, close to the road. Okay, so that's the number two. Number three, whether requested area is substantial, area variance is substantial, the variances requested are not substantial. There are, and I mentioned this earlier, I think I've covered it, there are several businesses, Rite Aid, credit union, newer developments on Port Watson Streets that have similar designs within similar setbacks and front yard parking. I think that one answered itself, that's number three. Number four... Uh, number four, uh, whether proposed variance will have an adverse effect or impact on the physical environmental conditions in the neighborhood or district. Uh, the proposed area variance will not have an adverse effect or impact on the physical environment. Uh, I mentioned the lighting earlier. The lighting plan was approved by the planning commission. Hundred percent dark sky friendly compliance, drops from a LED lighting. Uh, in regards to noise and lighting, proposed a six-foot, not a six-inch. I apologize, we will change that. I'm sure I will not, if I get to the point, will not get a building permit for a six-inch fence. But we'll change that. The six-foot fence is proposed at the rear of the property, at the north here. Uh, and again, that will eliminate any lighter noise that was considered as well, to eliminate any noise. All parking is kept near front of the site. Uh, again, we wanted to keep that, again, away from the residential set, put the parking up here. Uh, traffic study, we'll get into that further later. But the traffic study, uh, review was completed and submitted to all the boards. Uh, the common council had a copy of it to all the members. The planning commission looked at it. It was heavily, heavily discussed in great detail in the meetings and several different meetings. Uh, the controlling agency of the Port Watson, which is the New York State DOT, off, also gave us a letter initially with this site plan with conditional approval of the curb cuts, saying that there's no issues at all. Okay, uh, fuel tanks, uh, okay, for their physical environment, fuel tanks are highly regulated by the New York State DEC and the EPA. Okay, there's guidelines that I must follow. I have to get a New York State DEC, uh, PPS license, retail license. And again, everything is double wall fiberglass. Also, the county did ask about this in the beginning, and I did submit to them a very detailed package, about ten pages of all the sensors, double wall piping, what the materials were and what I used. So that was given to the, uh, Portland County Planning Professional Staff. They know what they're looking at, I gave it to them, and they were totally fine with it. Uh, again, I mentioned before, physical environment. The site was a gas station for fifteen plus years. Okay, it's had an automobile use since then, so, uh, that, I think that answers the physical. Uh, number five, whether alleged difficulty was self-created, which considerations shall be relevant to the decision of the board, but shall not necessarily preclude the granting of the area variance. Uh, this is not a self-created hardship. Uh, this use, fuel station, retail store, is a permitted use in your zoning in a GB-two. Okay, uh, the project's going to be a vast improvement over what's on site now. Uh, layout is what is recommended by the city's master plan on the Port Watson portal. Okay, uh, even if the board determines the alleged difficulty is self-created, this in itself is not determinative for granting the area variance. So that's the fifth question. That's all I have in regards to the, you know, the five area variances and the five questions that like pertain to it. Uh, what I would like to do now is I'd like to bring on a professional traffic engineer, Mr. Gordon Stansberry. He's the one that did the traffic review. I know traffic was a hot topic with the planning commission. Uh, I think they were very happy with the outcome there. But this, this board, I wanted to bring Gordon up just to speak to the traffic. He is a professional, I'm not. So he's going to give a quick two to three minute. You guys can feel free to ask him questions, and I'll come back up.
Thank you, good evening. Um, just to introduction, my name is Gordon Stansberry with GTS Consulting. Uh, I am a licensed professional engineer in New York State, as well as a certified professional traffic operations engineer with the Institute of Transportation Engineers. I have been in practice for about twenty-six years. Um, I've done traffic studies for well over a hundred, um, convenience store gas stations for, um, pretty much all the big names, Speedway, Cirque, Nice and Easy, Express Mart, Burn, uh, Maravito, I've worked for pretty much all of them. Um, just as a initial statement, DOT initially did not require a traffic study for this project. Um, that kind of speaks volumes to me as a traffic engineer. Um, when they conceptually approved the site plan, they did not request a traffic study, which, uh, in my world means they don't have a traffic concern. Uh, Sunburn did ask me to come out and, uh, do a, a traffic review, uh, so that they had some documentation for operations as they went through the process. Um, as Christian said, the proposed site is a forty-two hundred, uh, forty-two, thirty-two square foot store with eight fueling positions. Um, we complete our trip generation estimates using the IT Trip Generation Manual, uh, which is basically the, uh, bible for traffic engineers, for lack of a better word. Uh, it's the national standard that we use. Uh, we use the land use eight fifty-three, which is a convenience store with gas. Um, that land use has both, uh, trip generation rates based on square footage of the store, as well as number of fueling positions. We look at both, uh, and take the most conservative number for the highest generator. Um, for this site, the, uh, square footage of the store is the defining, um, trip generator. Um, using that, uh, land use, this development is projected to generate a total of eighty-six trips entering and exiting in the morning and a hundred and five total trips entering and exiting in the evening. Um, an important thing to understand with that is that the majority of the traffic generated is drawn from traffic already on the streets passing the site. Uh, based on the IT trip generation, the, uh, standard pass-by rates for this type of, uh, development are sixty-three percent of the trips during the morning and sixty-six percent of the trips during the evening. So well over, you know, two-thirds, right around that, um, is traffic that's already here. So once you apply those percentages, we actually use a sixty percent to be a little bit conservative. Um, we're projecting that fifty-one percent, fifty-one of the trips entering and exiting in the morning are pass-by and sixty-three in the evening. That means that those trips are already there, they're not new trips to the area. So the actual new traffic generated is only thirty-five trips coming to and from the site in the morning and forty-two coming to and from the site in the evening. This equates to approximately one new car every one to two minutes entering and exiting this area. Um, given that low volume increase is, is why DOT doesn't require a traffic study in this, in this instance. Um, it's generally not noticeable to motors in the area when you're adding one car per minute, um, compared to the existing volumes. Uh, looking at the existing volumes in this area, in two thousand and seven, the average daily traffic on Port Watson was eleven thousand three hundred seventy-one cars. In two thousand and nineteen, it was nine thousand nine hundred eighty-two. Uh, that's a twelve-point-two percent decrease in traffic over the last twelve years, or an average of a one percent decrease per year. So that also tells us that there's excess capacity here. Uh, with traffic volumes having decreased consistently, we, we have capacity to add our thirty-five to forty new cars entering and exiting. We also, uh, looked at historical volumes on, uh, on Port Watson. Specifically, there was a two thousand and eighteen traffic count that was collected a hundred and forty-five feet to the east of River Road, uh, east of River Road. Um, that traffic count showed, uh, a morning peak hour volume on Route eleven of approximately four hundred and sixty cars westbound and two hundred and fifty-seven cars eastbound. The evening peak was, uh, similar volumes, four hundred cars, uh, westbound, five hundred and sixty eastbound. Looking at these volumes, if traffic was completely uniform and, uh, you know, consistent gaps between each vehicle, uh, we would have an average gap of seven to nine seconds between each vehicle, uh, which is within the range of the standard six to nine second gap that we need to turn left out of driveway. So looking at the historical volumes, the historical counts, we're comfortable that there are adequate gaps in traffic to safely turn in and out of the site. Um, additionally, we have the traffic light there at Kellogg, which, uh, will create some additional gaps in the eastbound traffic, kind of cause some platoons, which will give us some longer gaps as, as needed. So given the fact that, uh, oh, finally, we also looked at site distances for the driveways. Uh, this area is generally flat. Uh, sightlines are very good from both driveway locations. Uh, so there's no concern with safety, being able to see oncoming cars when you turn in or out of the driveways. So, to kind of sum all of that up, we're a low-traffic generator for new trips. We have good sightlines, we have adequate gaps in traffic, we have historically reduced traffic volumes, which tells us that we have good capacity. So with all of those factors, our conclusion is that there is no traffic concern for the site. Uh, we're not expecting any significant increase in traffic, and, uh, we generally don't believe it'll be noticeable to the existing motors in the area. And going back to DOT's original, um, conceptual approval and not requiring a traffic study, our findings are consistent with DOT's opinion that a traffic study was not needed. Um, given that they said we conceptually approved the site plan, go on to design, that just emphasizes the fact that, uh, traffic is not an issue, and they didn't even require a study in the first place. Uh, with that, I'm happy to answer any questions. Um, but, uh, otherwise, I'll turn it back over to Christian.
Uh, a question, just like you asked, yes. What is considered, uh, traffic? You say one of the plans, the last, what would you?
So a, a standard traffic study threshold is a hundred cars, uh, entering and exiting new trips. So when you start looking at adjacent intersections, if you're adding more than fifty new cars to an intersection, then DOT will start to require a traffic study. Um, from a single-lane roadway, general capacity of a single lane is eighteen hundred cars. So I would say, when you start getting up into the eighty-hundred cars per direction, uh, that's when you're starting to get to a moderate to higher volume roadway, uh, where you, where a traffic study is more warranted. Um, as I said, I've done a lot of traffic studies for gas stations. Um, they really are predominantly drawing traffic there. Any other questions? Thank you, thanks, Martin. Okay, one last. I have, uh, our attorney with us tonight, uh, Mr. Tom Fusila from Hancock and Esterbrook. Uh, he is representing us. He wanted to talk about a few of the legalities in the actual law in regards to, uh, area variance.
Tom? Good evening, everybody. I, I'm not going to be long-winded here. I just want to make a few brief, uh, points regarding some legal issues. First, I, I just want to make a comment. In the past, I, I've noticed that the chair hasn't voted on the ZDA. And, and I look, I, I don't know if that's intentional or it was just project by project. I just want to say, I, I've looked through your code, I've looked through your charter, I can see no reason the chair can or, or won't vote, so, uh, that's just a, a comment. Uh, you, you looked at the zoning map, uh, earlier, and this is, uh, this Port Watson gateway area is clearly a commercial portal. So this project is by no means out of character for that neighborhood. Uh, Mr. Burnell went through all the different uses in the past at this site, and this is no different. Um, in, in this case, not always the case. You've got three different boards involved, so it's a lot going on. Each board has its own, uh, role in, in the process, and Christian talked about that earlier on. Uh, I just want to emphasize, uh, zoning board's got an important role, but it's not the role to determine what's a proper use of a particular parcel. That's the common council's, uh, job to determine, and they've, uh, done that in, in their zoning code, which determines what is an allowable use in each district. This is a GB-two district. It's got particular allowable uses and prohibited uses. Uh, the, uh, convenience store with the gasoline is clearly a, an allowable use in this particular, uh, district. Uh, the planning commission's role to determine, you know, an appropriate layout, uh, egress, ingress, things like that, where, where buildings are located, things like that. And they've done that in this case, and they've approved the, uh, site plan for the, for the project. So it's, it's, the ZDA's role to determine whether the applicants met the, uh, criteria for an area, uh, variance, uh, based upon the specific criteria, those five issues that Christian talked about. Uh, I, I'd just like to highlight a few points that, that relate to that. First of all, uh, as I said, the, the Port Watson, uh, gateway is a commercial zoning district. It's, it's a commercial area. Uh, the city's comprehensive plan highlighted the importance of this area and how it's the city's, you know, the entire, uh, city council's vision that this area be developed with this kind of good development, not the ad hoc kind of whole-time developments that you see in that area, including the one that was on this particular, uh, parcel. Um, there have been commercial uses in the past, long-standing commercial uses, gasoline stations, automotive uses, things like that, um, similar, similar kinds of uses. You're, um, there have been questions in the past about traffic, and Mr. Stansberry just dealt with that. There's still no other professional, uh, input as far as problems in this area. So, uh, you know, you, you've got that kind of information now in, in terms of what your decision should be. To an extent, it's a consideration in anybody's mind, and it raises because the planning, the county planning board raised it. Uh, even though the, uh, planning, the professional planning department recommended approval, the pla, the county planning board recommended denial. And one of the important points they've emphasized was, you know, there's, there's another, other commercial businesses that this might threaten. And I, I just want to make it clear, courts, and the highest court in New York has determined that zoning decisions that are based on the desire to protect some other economic, uh, use in the area are not proper, uh, zoning decisions. It's not a proper basis for making your decision, wondering what impact this might have on some other business. And similarly, um, you can't limit the number of a particular types of, uh, type of business if it's an allowable use in the code, which this is. This, um, they've, the city council and its zoning map, its zoning scheme in the city has determined that convenience stores and gasoline stations are proper uses in this district. And it, it's not like it's row after row, it's, as you get. It, it, it's few and far between. This is totally compatible with other uses in that area. It's a good development. It, it fits in well with the character of the area. And, um, we request that you, you grant the, uh, five variances that Christian talked about. Thank you.
Thank you, Tom. Well, that, that's it for everything. I know we were going to long-winded, all of us, uh, but that was our explanation. Glad we got to give it in a much thorough, more capacity this time. Uh, Burgary looks forward to becoming a part of the city of Portland. As you guys know, we have a very large plan in Portlandville, uh, that we're going to be spending, you know, several millions of dollars in the near future. And we're looking forward to grow, you know, with this site in the city of Portland account. Any questions I can entertain? One question.
Chris, this has no variant on Volton Forest. We just have a curiosity, is the third area, uh, property going to remain?
We do not know that at this time.
Okay.
Sometimes in, uh, news failures, we can keep, uh, more than one location. City of Volton, for example, we just, they had one store there for the last fifteen years. I built a new one there. We are building our second stores under construction as we speak, and so we have two stores there. Uh, so I can't answer that demographically until we get this. We do have, uh,
Just curiously.
Two stores.
It's valuable to the name of it.
Yep. Well, thank you very much. Thanks for our time.
Yeah, is there anyone else that is speaking this?
Good evening, uh, I'm wearing a caber. I represent, uh, Bill Brothers, located in a corner from, uh, the whole location. And, uh, as I indicated last time I was here, uh, Bill Brothers doesn't oppose there being development at that particular spot. Uh, however, the feeling is that this is oversized prior to the size of law. Before I go into, uh, addressing each of the items, I want to just indicate that I know that there's been a motion here for a rehearing tonight, when the motion was made. And, uh, the vote was unanimous to do that. And I would just note that under the general city's law, it, it indicates that the rehearing that's to be had is subject to the same notice provisions as the original hearing. So, uh, it would be my position based on that provision of the law. Uh, general city's law, section eighty-one A. General city's law, section 81A, sub-12, that once you have voted for the rehearing, as you did, that then this ought to be put out before the public and for the public to know that they, there is going to be a rehearing on all these issues. Because until the vote was had, there was no way to know whether or not that was going to happen. Secondarily, under that same subsection of law, the indication, the reading of the statute there is that upon such rehearing, the board may reverse, modify, or annul its original ordered decision or determination upon the unanimous vote of all members then present, provided the board finds that the rights vested in persons acting in good faith and reliance upon the reheared ordered decision or determination will not be prejudiced thereby. And clearly, there would not be any prejudice for that. Since Burn, who's really, who's asking for this, there's clearly not any prejudice to them for that to be, upon a unanimous vote. I would note that there's been really no new written submissions to the board prior to this evening. Nothing's really changed since the December 21 meeting. The common council did act on this, and it was, their most recent action, I believe, is invalid. They attempted to pass, well, it did pass, a resolution. But that resolution didn't have any force in effect because their original, what they originally passed was by local law filed with the Department of State. So any amendment, modification, revision of that would have to be done by local law. And not only would the initial local law have to be rescinded upon notice to the public, et cetera, but then a new local law would have to be drafted and upon notice and passed. So what has been acted on by the county council in January was not valid. Now, look at what Burndary is proposing. And there's no doubt that what the use there is permitted. And it's not the use that is what the issue is here. It is the overuse of that particular piece of property, not the use that is intended to be undertaken there. And just as a financial impact on existing businesses can't be considered, nor should the board here be considering the fact that simply because Burndary has a certain percentage of profit margin that they want to make, and the only way they can make that percentage of profit margin is to overuse that piece of property by putting excessive number of gas pumps there and an overly sized building there, should that in any way impact this particular board to say, well, then fine, just because the use is permitted, we should go ahead and let them do whatever they want. That is not what this board is here for. It's not here to simply rubber stamp their requests despite all the nice professional drawings we've seen. Now, they've asked for five variances. And the number, obviously five, is not insignificant, nor is the percentage insignificant. And while they argue that it's not substantial, I would say it is substantial. By their own writings, what they've provided, the percentage or amount that they're looking for, front yard setback, they're, the required or allowed is minimum 30, maximum 45. They're proposing 124. The front yard setback on River Street, again, same thing. They're proposing 72. The rear yard setback, 20 feet is required. They're proposing 10. So that's a 50% diminution. The ground sign, square footage, they've asked for a 50% increase on that, and then the building placement. So to say that it's not significant, I think, belies what is really transpiring here. Now, relative to the traffic concerns, and I think there are a number of traffic concerns. One is the volume. And I know we've heard from a professional as to what his estimation is. However, when you look at that as a percentage, it's anywhere from 1/3 to 40% increase is what he's saying it's going to be. Now, Burndary isn't going into that location with the idea that they're not going to be drawing customers there. That is, to even think that belies what they have done in the past. Now, up in Homer, when they went in, they immediately started sending out flyers to various members of the community to come visit their location, where it was, ads, et cetera. So clearly, they're looking to draw people that aren't just driving by that particular location. They're reaching out to all members of the community to try to draw them to that location. And I doubt that the traffic study that it was done indicated anything about that. Also, I know that relative to that traffic study, we didn't see anything about where the placement of those curb cuts in relation to the stop sign on Port Wat, or not Port Watson, but River Street. And then the curb cut in relation to the Kellogg Road coming in a northerly direction and the stop light in proximity to where that curb cut is going to be. Now, if there's any traffic back up there, it's, the traffic from the light is going to go beyond the curb cut. And if there's traffic at the stop sign, it's going to go beyond the curb cut on the other way. Also, there was no mention of the increased usage of the railroad in the area. Now, no doubt the railroad is up the street aways from where that location is. However, anyone that drives down in that area, when there's a train or railroad traffic, knows the backup that you see, which can go and does go, all the way down to the Port Watson Street Bridge, which is beyond the location where this building is going to be. And in regard to traffic, I think we also have to look at what else is in that area. And there is a school not too far from that location and within walking distance from the, that particular spot. So I believe the applicant's requests here are financially motivated. They're looking to put in larger than necessary development, even though it's a permitted use, onto that particular spot for profit margin. And they're pushing their buildings closer to other buildings, including residences that are in the area. And I would note also that they're going to be tearing down a house that's there. And though it's in a GB, that is a residential structure in a GB. And that is taking out a significant amount of green space and a buffer to other homes in the area. Also, Burndary has made no secret of the fact that they're going to be open 24 hours a day. And being open 24 hours a day undoubtedly creates a different dynamic than stores that are only open limited times during the day and night hours. 24-hour-a-day operations in the city of Portland, as in, I imagine, other places, unfortunately, create, create a lot of problems and additional police and health and safety concerns. Now, to say that this problem isn't self-created, I don't know how it could not be self-created. This is Burndary's application. It is their design. It is their proposal for these various variances. So while the use may be fine, that doesn't mean that their design has to be fine. And it's clearly a self-created hardship in that area. So, and though that doesn't, isn't the only factor that can be considered or should be considered, or, and it is not, doesn't preclude the granting of the area variances. I think when you look at the other factors, first of all, if the area variance is substantial, my argument would be that it is substantial for the various reasons that happen to you. Then the adverse impact on the area, I talked a little bit about. And the granting of the area variance as to a change in the character of the neighborhood. And I think that is self-evident. So can the benefits sought by the applicant be achieved by some method feasible for the applicant to pursue other than an area variance? I think it's pretty clear it can be. All they have to do is redesign what their, what their intentions are there. Simply because this is what they want to do, does that make it right for the neighborhood or for the city? And I think that's all I have, and I'll be glad to answer any questions you have. And I would note that even though they did indicate that it was a gas station there, it hasn't been a gas station for years in that location. Just if by runs across the street was a gas station, just as a lot of other places in the city of Portland were gas stations. Simply to say, well, now let's go plunk another gas station in where there used to be a gas station, that is not the type of commercial development that is being sought.
Do you have any questions? Thank you.
Anyone else have anything to say?
Could I just follow up? Very briefly, there's nothing that requires you to wait for the county council to finish up your review. You have a completely independent role than the rezoning of that little postage stamp of the property on this development. So keep that in mind. Secondly, you know, Mr. Nickelbacher has said a couple of times how this is financially motivated. Of course, every development is financially motivated. But while, while they claim they're not against the use, it's clearly their opposition is financially motivated. And we've seen that from the original county planning decisions. We've seen that argument from the planning commission in the city, and we've seen it in front of the county council. So keep that in mind. It's not your role to protect an existing business. And, you know, as far as, you know, the idea of they shouldn't be taking out the existing residential structure because it's going to remove, you know, that use, it's a residential use, green space, whatnot. What you're, what you're essentially saying in that case is that you're taking the decision out of the owner's hands. That's owned by a property owner who wants to sell the parcel to the developer. And to say, well, no, you can't do that because it was an existing residential use, and it's going to change the green space, that, that's just not the appropriate role in zoning. So if anybody has any questions, otherwise, thank you for rehearing this, for your attention tonight. Thank you.
Is there a motion to close the public hearing?
Motion to close the public hearing. Say it. Hi.
Do you have to wait?
I do, but what I, what I would like to discuss before me, yeah, I think what is, what concerns me.
Could you speak up so we can get that?
Yes. Is there a requirement in here that we need the mask? So I guess what's concerning me at this point is what Mr. Nickelbacher brought up. Just an initial procedural issue is the general city law, section 81A, sub-division 12. And I'm reading that, and I just want to be sure that the, given the committee, the notice that we're required to provide to the committee because I don't want it bounced back again to us on the other side. So it's just, I think, a technicality. Looking at that section, I believe Mr. Nickelbacher was looking at, it's rehearing, a motion for the zoning board of appeals to hold a rehearing to review any order, decision, or determination of the board not previously re-curred may be made by any member of the board. A unanimous vote of all members of the board then present is required for such different hearing to occur. So we've done that, and that's, and I think that's fine. But then it says, upon such rehearing, the board, oh, wait, meant such rehearing is subject to the same notice provisions as an original hearing. I think that we're, we skipped that step, that we didn't give the proper notes. And it's not, and that's a technicality. I don't, you know, I think if we voted tonight, there might be another issue. We might be right back here on the other side. And maybe other members of the board can help me out with that. I just want to do this right for everybody's sake and make sure that we'll have.
Was this posted? Like, what was the notice that was given about this?
Hey, Jay, can you speak to that? Because I think when we originally, when this originally came out, this agenda, is this agenda coming out, public notice?
Well, I think that, I think the issue, and I could be wrong, that I was referring to Mr. Nickelbacher, is, is that you, you have to do the vote for, for the rehearing. And then once we've done that, then we have to give the public notice that the hearing is rehearing.
And where we do that, where we doing that in the agenda?
Well, so I think what Karen's saying, I don't want, sorry Karen, but that once the board unanimously have votes to rehear the issue, you're saying, Karen, that then the public notice requirements.
I think that's what triggers, triggers it from the way that I'm reading this. I think we would be pretty mature to make the decision this evening or having. And it's a shame to make everybody go through a rehearing, but if we hadn't done, and as attorneys know, we haven't given the proper notice, that's a huge, huge issue later down the road.
But that doesn't necessarily discount the information provided.
Correct, right, right, yeah, right. I agree with that.
Karen, I agree as well. But can someone explain exactly? I know that there's a public notice in the newspaper. What is the required public notice?
I mean, in the past, we've sent out to adjacent properties a notice. If the agenda in itself did not serve.
But the only notice we were able to give is that we were, that we may vote on whether a rehearing may occur. We didn't, we wouldn't be able to send out the notice that the hearing, rehearing was going to occur.
With date and time.
Right.
And we don't have to necessarily re-present, we just have to reconvene, correct? Is that, AJ, is that so?
I think that's, I think that's the way to go about it, just to, like, we're here tonight to cross all our Ts and dot our Is.
But they don't have to re-present. Would they, we just have to reconvene with the public notice so that? We just have to reconvene with public notice so that, that any other additional public comments, we have.
They don't have to re-present. And then if there was more, and then, right, I think they wouldn't need to re-present.
Because we know our history, we're looking at stuff that's multiple years open and whether or not we get the right procedure of that. So if it goes and it takes us 30 days to do it properly, so it does not come back again, I'm, you know, I would, I'm for it.
I, yeah, I think that that's the safe way to go about it.
So, and so we have the motion to table it pending public notice. We have to table it pending.
Pending public notice.
Public notice to the next meeting, to our, to our March meeting, correct?
Correct.
AJ, does that sound right?
That, that, yes.
Sorry, I hate to push it on your book.
No, I'm, frankly, I'm going to apologize, I can't, I don't.
Okay, so I, I have a motion to table it pending public notice, but you readdress the march roll.
That's it.
All in favor?
Let's see down, let's see what's in hand was up. Public notice for. I'm sorry.
Did you take care of the public notice?
Yes, yes, yes. And do you guys understand what?
Yes.
Are you guys planning on holding it up to the meeting?
It'll be March, we only have.
Yeah, I think you have to have 10 days for the public notice. I think 10 days, that's good.
I would, yes.
Don't wait, don't, you want to shoot.
Stay connected. Make sure you hit the subscribe button.